Go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Pledge of Allegiance. Of America and public, which it stands, a nation indivisible, its liberty.
Seated. To begin with, a roll call, please.
Mayor Tim.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lind. Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Jett.
Here.
Councilmember Wimp. Thank you.
Right. Do we have any alterations to the regular agenda?
There are no alterations from staff.
None from council, I'm seeing. Can I get a motion?
Moves to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously under our regular agenda and we're doing a resolution tonight to declare an emergency Glenwood Drive slide pursuant to public contract code section 1102, authorizing the city manager to cause repair the slide pursuant to public contract code 22035 and 220.
Great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Tim, members of the city council. As you are aware, there was a large storm last Thursday and that caused some damage to Glenwood Drive in the north end of the city. So tonight at this special meeting, we're here to review the damage caused to the roadway during that storm event. The council's asked to consider the emergency conditions that require an exception to the public bidding process in order to take emergency action to repair that road. And along with that would be to authorize the city manager to take those actions necessary to, without the formal competitive bidding process, in order to shore up that road before the conditions worsen. So just an overview of what happened last Thursday, nearly three inches of rain fell in a 24-hour period and the drainage system there on Glenwood Drive was overwhelmed by excessive runoff. Here's a picture of where that soil separated underneath the roadway. So due to the uncontrolled stormwater along the road and sheet flow that came across the roadway then, that affected this section of the soil underneath the road that then slid about 17 feet down the hillside and undermined the roadway. So our staff took emergency actions to just try to prevent the damage from getting worse by putting, you know, some plastic there to direct the runoff and to also close the bike lane so that bikers wouldn't be using the bike lane that was on the section of the road that was undermined. So about two feet of that bike lane needed to be closed. And then on Monday, when staff went back out with the geotechnical consultant to review the conditions, they noticed this new crack that you see in the picture there in the lane of the roadway. And that has further concerns about the roadway's integrity in that section. So continued rainfall has been expected and we're concerned about additional risk of failure of this section of the road. And of course, if more of the road starts to fail, we may need to completely close a lane or close the roadway, which would not be great for the neighborhood up there. In addition to the road, there's also an eight-inch water main that is impacted, that actually got exposed when the soil fell off of the side of the hill there. We immediately contacted the Scotts Valley Water District. They came on site and they isolated that line to prevent future failure of that because they were concerned it could potentially blow out without the soil being there on all sides of the pipe. So a break in that would have cut off services to the Sand Hill and the Northridge neighborhoods. So why emergency action is needed? We feel that this road situation is an immediate threat to public health and safety and the neighboring property. We need to stabilize the slope and protect the road from further damage and protect from further damage to the water main. We have that temporary erosion control in place, but the risk still remains high particularly due to that concerning crack that we have in the roadway there. And the work to repair this requires specialized skills in construction. This is not something that we could repair within our staff capacity. As I mentioned, the geotech met staff on site on Monday and concluded that the current condition does constitute an emergency as the slope is unstable and the roadway and the water main remain vulnerable. Any delay in stabilization could cause further risk of the roadway collapsing. And we need to make sure that we can keep this road open as a critical transportation corridor. So the public contract code requires the city to, a normal process, takes at least six weeks to complete. We're concerned that delay could really worsen the conditions out on the roadway there. And that is why we're asking the council to consider declaring this emergency work to be able to repair the roadway, to stabilize it and prevent further damage. So the requested action this evening is to adopt the resolution before you to declare the emergency under the public contracting code and to authorize the city manager to take actions to secure contracts to complete emergency repairs without competitive bidding pursuant to the public contract code. With that, happy to answer any questions. We're also joined this evening by Dat Nguyen, who's our senior civil engineer. For any technical questions, Dat's been on site with all of the consultants that have helped us assess the situation.
Well, thank you for the quick action and thank you to staff. I know we're shorthanded right now, so having everyone jump on this so quickly, especially with this emergency, you know, so appreciated by the public. So with that, I had one question, then I'll open it up as well. Do we have with the slide that happened, is there a risk of further slides in that? Not in this particular spot, but along that corridor there? Or where the water main came out or the drainage main came out? Is it kind of isolated to that area? Do you know, Dat?
Based on the information that we have, we visited the site. The roadway at this section failed here because if you look at, there's a dike that was built and then there's an inlet. During the heavy rain, the grate itself was designed for bicycle proof. Therefore, the grate is very small, lift covered, so all this water run past the inlet and go down to this side and so it failed. Now, we don't know with the current information until we have a geotech test the soil and be honest to find the strength with the playing of cohesiveness and all that. We don't know what the potential for that.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Other questions? Counsel, yeah, vice mayor.
And with the crack, obviously, in the pavement, how concerned are we that that is going to break away further into the roadway? And are the steps you've taken, do you feel that as far as you can tell, none of us can be sure, you feel comfortable with it remaining in the position it is? Or is there possibly that the rest of that, or a good portion of that road could fall?
With the step that recommend based on by the geotech and the general contractor, we feel comfortable that it will address the roadway and protect the water main. But like I said, until the soil report is done, we really cannot say much of what's going to happen because it may go beyond, it may just isolate area. I don't have expertise in that.
Are there more steps we can do to prevent for the safety or liability concerns or anything else that if someone's car could drive partway and have it collapse and we don't really know how secure that is? I know you don't have answers, but is there more we can do?
Right now, with the impervious fabric that we place on our plastic sheet and the way that we place the sandbag, we divert water to the further down and we hopefully not going to weaken this area itself. And we hope that it's going to stabilize for now. But like I say, we don't really know, we don't have the information until the testing is done.
I don't want to push you too far, but, and it sounds like you're taking those steps and monitoring it and with the various steps, at least have some time to get the further information and know what the next steps will be and then report back.
Yeah, that's why you saw on the slide that where the crack, we marked the location of the crack so we can monitor if it expands after each drain. The inspector go out there and monitoring the roadway, the crack and also the slope itself.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, so the storm drains are on the other side of the road. And did this particular storm drain, did it clog or was it just not adequate to deal with the volume of water?
The existing storm drain was not clogged. It's just that the grate on the top with so much leaf.
Yeah.
It's just going to cover the, so if you clean it out, the water captured it will go.
Yeah, so the leaves are just blocking the drain because I have the same thing over by my house. Okay, so I guess that'd be during the next storm, maybe we'll check those.
Yes, we, now that we know, we have our maintenance in that when there's a storm come out, they need to go out and clean it, make sure that the grate is open.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because that's all I understand.
Other question?
I just wanted to add on to council member's line of thought. I'm curious, would it make sense then, since we don't, the stability of the road, to preventatively close that lane until we can gather more information? I know it would probably cause a significant problem to the flow of traffic, but it's just that if it is so compromised already along that line of liability and wanting to keep our townspeople safe, like, would that make sense or does it feel like that's too extreme of a measure?
It's, when we talked to the geotech out there, we did ask if we should close down half of the roadway and open only one direction and with someone controlling, they feel what we have right now is sufficient, is enough to have the roadway open in direction, but we just keep monitoring the slide, the soil. If it's further slide, oh, the crack, the crack is expanded or whatever, then that's when we start closing that one lane.
Yeah, first of all, thank you to city staff who was on this very quickly. Thanks to everyone who, first of all, recognizes, but then got the crews out there quickly to assess the damage and what are we going to do about this now? I am concerned about some of the preventative steps that we could be taking in the future to help safeguard us against this. My question is more around cost. In our wildest imagination, do we have some idea or a supposal of what this might cost? And then part two of that is how we might fund that.
I don't think we have any idea what the costs are going to be yet. We have some ideas of what the fixes could be, but until we get the soil sampling, as Dat said, we don't know which fix is appropriate based on the soil type that is there. I have been in contact with Cal OES about this incident and both the county and the California Office of Emergency Services are aware of it. And I've just started the dialogue with them of, you know, if the repair to this exceeds the city's resources, what's the steps and what process do we need to initiate with Cal OES regarding emergency funding?
And along that same line, you know, since this is impacting a significant water main for the Scotts Valley Water District, is there any opportunity for them to partner with us on repairs or do they have the ability to come alongside of us with this?
I haven't had any conversations with the water district.
I had the conversation with Nate, Nate Gipsy, the water district. Basically, their water main right now, if the roadway does not slide, they claim that it should be okay. It's all fractured, but it should be okay. If we able to stabilize the slide and the soil and everything, that water main should be all right. So therefore, their claim is that they don't need, they're not going to contribute anything.
Well, I'm just wondering what our North City folks think about that answer. All right, thank you so much and I appreciate the staff report. It was very complete, had a lot of valuable information, so thank you.
We have questions from the public. Comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for motion.
Move approval of Resolution 2076, Resolution City Council, City of Scotts Valley, declaring an emergency for the Glenwood Drive slide pursuant to public contract code 1102 and authorizing the city manager to cause the repair of the slide pursuant to public contract code 22035 and 22050.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And with that, we are done with our first meeting. We'll go ahead and adjourn and then we are going to, the second. So I'll call the regular city council meeting to order and we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please. Thank you. You may be seated. I have a roll call, please.
Mayor Tim.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lind.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Jett.
Here.
Councilmember Wimp.
Here.
All right, thank you. With that, I'll go on to our first special set matter and I have a proclamation and I will head back to the podium for it and I'll ask Mr. Toller to join me.
So this is a special thing that we're doing tonight for Steve Toller. I'm going to actually go through this entire proclamation. I don't usually do that, but he's done so much for our city. And I believe you spent a couple decades in city government before you went out and branched out on your own.
Couple decades here.
In city government and then you started your own consulting work in 2015, is that right? And then in 2017, he joined the city here, helping us. And I don't think you knew what you were getting into at the time when you did that because there was just a lot of work ahead. We went through a lot of staffing changes and you helped our city in so many ways. So I'm going to go through some of those. First of all, I'll say that Steve lives in Eugene, Oregon. So, I mean, he came here tonight because we're doing this for him and on his behalf. So I know how much this means to you and how much it means to us. So thank you for joining us, but not just tonight. He would join us all the time to help us through so many financial challenges or just reporting or other things we had to do as a city. So, and you would come to both regular city council meetings, strategic planning sessions, so many of the things where we needed you. You helped us to develop our first ever 10-year financial forecasting tool and we still use that today. So yes, and we probably will use it for decades to come because it's just so good. And that forecasting tool is what we rely on now. The, both the administrative services director, city manager and the council, when we're voting on our budget every year, this is the tool we use. And you also helped develop the city's first fiscal sustainability plan, which involved a comprehensive review of the city's revenue and expenditure conditions and the creation of an iterative multi-year approach to achieve financial stability. What that means is before Steve got here, we weren't really forecasting for the future quite that well. We had an idea, but it was, I'd say, a rough idea. And now we really know what's happening and we're able to look years and years ahead and say, in, you know, not next year, but three years out, we're going to have a problem if we don't do something now. And so it allowed us as a council over the years to take actions that were very important to keep our city afloat. And so when key staff positions were vacant, you assisted us with annual financial audits and comprehensive annual financial reports. And you also advised the city during its emergency in 2019 and 2020. And that led to us placing Measure Z on the ballot. We actually had to declare an emergency because we were in so much trouble financially that if we didn't do something immediately, we were going to be in deep stuff, right? So Steve, Steve helped us get that measure on the ballot in 2020. That passed, was approved by our voters and now generates over $4 million per year for our city. And that's really, when you look at our projections from here on out, that's the one thing that has been a real bright spot for our city. It's allowed us to restaff our police department. It's allowed us to keep good staff with the city. And it also allowed us to have a pretty good map towards the future with our finances. However, it didn't fill all the gaps, right? So in 2024, again, you helped us do another measure and looked at the financial projections. And so we had to put Measure X on the ballot, which the voters also approved. And that will raise an estimated $750,000 a year for our city, which helps fill that gap that we were facing. You also advised us of the COVID-19 pandemic and I know I worked hand to hand with you over that period of time. All the projections we had coming out of 2020 were so rosy because we had just passed this measure. I remember we were like, wow, we finally got hope for our city's finances, March 8th, 10th, 15th, whatever it was of 2020 hit, and everything changed. And, but you were there hand in hand with us. We were short-staffed in our finance department. You helped us get through that period of time. And I know for me personally, that was a very, very challenging time to be in city government, yet you stood with us during that. So we really thank you for that. You advised us through so many things and you've made yourself available to help everyone here and everyone in the front office. I therefore, as Mayor of Scotts Valley, I want to give you this entire proclamation on behalf of our city, all the public, and we just really appreciate. And it is rare for a city to recognize someone who's served as a consultant. I just, I know that's an unusual thing. So that tells you how much everyone here has appreciated your work and time. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
To that point, and if I can call you Derek right now, because we've, you know, I've had the opportunity to be able to serve this community for so long. I indeed understand how much of an honor this is. And when I called Molly and told her about my decision to, I will use the word retire, although I'm really saying to people that I'm going to stop working for money because I don't believe, as a faith-centered guy, that we ever retire. We're always called to serve people and to pour into people's lives. And that's what my intention is doing. So when I called her, you know, and she called and said, you know, they'd like to do a proclamation for you. I'm like, what? That was nowhere in the cards. It's overwhelming that you guys would honor me in this way and I just want to say thank you for that. You know, I've, when I left serving local government for 20 years, I was concerned because the public service motivation in me is so strong. It's what drives me professionally and being able to serve a community and to help pour into people's lives and to make their experience in living in a community so much better was so important to me. And frankly, after the first year, first year and a half or so of doing the consulting gig or whatnot, I'm like, gosh, I don't know if I, am I feeling it? And then I got the call to serve Scotts Valley. And I'll tell you what, y'all poured into my life probably more than I feel like I've poured into this community. I don't want to thank you, all of you. Thank you to former council members and to this community for the impact that you had on my life. It helped me realize that, you know what, it's a little different than not being in the seat like Taylor and Molly and Kirsten and all y'all are. But it did give me an opportunity to be able to pour into the lives of the community. So I just want to say from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you for the role that you've played in my life. And it was indeed my honor to serve this community, albeit as a consultant, for the last eight or nine years or so. And I really appreciate that. So I told Molly today, I said, as I said, I'm stopping working for money, but I'm always available to talk and provide some insights because this gray hair has seen things. I've seen things in my professional life and I'm always happy to try to provide whatever insights I can to Molly, to Stephanie and to your team. So once again, I'm honored. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. That was really special. Okay, so we'll move on to less fun, but very interesting stuff nonetheless, committee reports. Who would like to start? Start on my left, Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Mr. Toller. I've kind of felt like, you know, prior to tonight, I didn't get a chance to know you or meet you. I've kind of felt like I was in the middle of one of those United Way commercials. I don't know you, but I love you. I get to benefit from everything that you did. So anyway, on to my committee report. So on to Regional Transportation Commission. So I attended a Focus on the Future Conference with RTC staff and the chair, November 9th through 11th. This was focused on what's called self-help counties. We are one of 25 self-help counties in the state. And what that means is that we've passed a local sales tax measure, help fund transportation projects. And what that does for us is it allows us to apply for additional federal and state grants and move our own projects forward. So it's advantageous for us to do that. We're one of 25. This particular conference, we explored a lot of information on the funding landscape of the state of California. One thing that's going on here is the state kind of future funds projects as they might become available. And the state's seeing a significant shortfall in gas tax revenue. And so that will affect transportation funding projects in the future. So what's starting to happen is up in Sacramento, they're starting to take a look at how they might replace that, what kind of gas tax infill they might be able to do. They say it's a replacement sales tax or a replacement tax on gasoline to help offset for the electric vehicle proliferation here. I think it's going to be a tax in addition to, but they're starting to hold town hall meetings on this to sort of, I guess, anesthetize the population to the fact that there, you can expect another tax is probably going to come out of Sacramento, help fund these transportation projects and to help infill the lack of money that's projected for future projects to pay. A lot of great information out there. A lot of things that we can expect in the future is autonomous vehicle legislation and safety around that as the autonomous vehicle field is starting to go. If you're up in this particular conference was in San Francisco and there was Waymos and Zooks and all kinds of stuff going on. It's the weirdest thing in the world to pull up next to a car that is, got no driver. There was a little emergency situation as I pulled into town and they were trying to turn traffic around on this road and Waymo would not move. Pop standard. Waymo was like, what do I do? So, and then also too, what was encouraging to hear out of some of the legislative consultants that were there.
focused on how to reduce liability costs, workers' compensation injuries, and best practices for safety and risk management. This is an annual training that the MBEJA Board has started offering every other year and is a great opportunity to just remind everyone of how we can manage risk. And the following day on Friday, I attended the MBEJA Board meeting. I am the treasurer of that board. We reviewed MBEJA's financial position and performance. And overall, the pool is doing really well at containing claims and costs in this very volatile claims climate, better than most pools across the state. So really glad with the preventative work we're doing through training, through like the sidewalk grinding contract we do, through safety grants to the cities, really a lot of proactive work to manage risk is paying off. Yesterday, we hosted our annual employee appreciation lunch where we presented service awards and thank yous to all of our city staff. It was lovely. Today through Friday, Admin Services Director Hill and our HR Manager Armstrong are attending the Cal Pelra Conference in Monterey. That is the California Public Employers Labor Relations Association. Mouthful. So they'll be learning about all the new laws and regulations and best practices in public employee labor relations. This coming Saturday, Interim Chief Rutherford will be attending the Sergeant Gutwiler Memorial Sign unveiling at Highlands Park that will be installed and unveiled this weekend. Tomorrow, the Planning Commission will be meeting and having a public hearing regarding ADU regulations, as well as an informational study session on the town center specific plan and EIR. And next week, the city will be kicking off a holiday shop local campaign to encourage support for our local businesses throughout the holiday shopping season. So look for information on the city's social channels and around town to participate in that. And that is credit to Jordan Taylor for pulling that together this year, second year we've been, we've done it. We have a new police officer, Fred Yun, who will be sworn in on December 8th. Excited to welcome Fred to our team. He's a lateral, so he has already experience as a police officer. And as Councilmember Lynn mentioned, POA has a toy drive scheduled for Black Friday in front of Target from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m., and all toys and donations will go to Valley Churches United. And just a reminder, the city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. And if you don't follow the city on social media and receive our newsletter, encourage people to sign up to do so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Next, it's time for public comment. It's a chance for members of the public to comment on any items up to three minutes that are not on our agenda. If anyone is here, please approach podium, state your name, and hear from you.
I attended the Park and Recs meeting the other evening, and I hadn't been in the chambers for a long time, really long time. It was impossible really to visually follow through some of the discussions. I had misread the plans I had printed up because the, there was no legend on the plan. So there was no scale, which is rather unheard of for, for an item that is taking public comment on. That's a pretty standard thing. I misread it. Some of my comments would, would, you know, later looking at it were inappropriate, as well as the commissioner had misread it. So I was really sad to see that. I also walked in and sat up the second row and visually to look up on that screen as they did the presentation, the document was not to scale. I couldn't see it. I couldn't angle my head. All that was on the back table was a binder-sized piece of paper. And I think you can do a lot better than that. And I think we have to do for accessibility. It is not accessible to all. We want people to be engaged. I'm going to be coming tomorrow night, hopefully. And if I can't read or see, you know, it's hard to have accurate comments. And all of you now have lovely large screens in front of you, but you don't have those for the public. And I ask, why not? It's got to be equal access. And we did all this improvement, and this, this podium isn't handicap accessible. We now have to have a path of travel leading from the transportation stop to the facility that's accessible. Did anyone look at accessible requirements? We did all these improvements, but we still don't have a ramp to the dais. These are things that people have disabilities shouldn't have to ask to have. And it's really quite embarrassing. And if you don't provide at least a large-scale plan that is visually accessible to all, you're excluding everyone. And you're not meeting the requirements to ADA accessibility, period. And this should be the job. I don't know who approved all these. I mean, it looks great. I love it. It was so needed, but we really fell short. And I think it's an embarrassment, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Do we have other speakers? Do we have anyone online? Do you want to speak? Raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any alterations to the consent agenda?
There are no alterations from staff.
Do we have any alterations? Counsel, all right, any from the public? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion. Move to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any staying? Right, motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to our regular agenda. Do we have any alterations to the regular agenda?
There are no alterations from staff.
Any from counsel? From the public? Line? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and promote a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Our motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, regular agenda. First item is consideration of a master governance and service agreement related to the regional interoperable next-generation radio system known as Ring. I'll pass it on to the city manager.
Yeah, Interim Chief Rutherford is going to kick this item off, so I'll pass it to him.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So, yes, we have the Ring presentation tonight, and Ring obviously stands for the Regional Interoperable Next Generation Radio System. And so what this is, what this is, is it's the first-time initiative to get all of the jurisdictions in the county to come together and build a next-generation radio system. That's the County of Santa Cruz, City of Santa Cruz, Scotts Valley, Watsonville, and Capitola, as well as UCSC. The system is designed to not only support law enforcement, but fire, EMS, public works in other jurisdictions, not necessarily here in Scotts Valley. Scotts Valley mainly for law, for the city, Scotts Valley Fire, as well, public works and some of the other agencies in the, in the other jurisdictions. So it's the first time that we've ever had an initiative where we're trying to bring everybody together at the same table and to build a new radio system. The current equipment that we use is well over 10 years past its actual serviceable life. We've seen issues in the past here in the city when we've had rain, severe rainstorms where our radio channel has gone down. We've kind of had to piecemeal things together and applied different Band-Aids, for lack of a better term, to limp the system along. And it's just, it's come time to update all of the systems. Additionally, a lot of the times, the different systems don't speak to each other. So Scotts Valley Police, our systems won't necessarily speak with Scotts Valley Fire, and we're right next door. As you saw last year with the tornado, it's important that we're able to, in a critical incident, be able to speak with each other, not to mention agencies or jurisdiction that are in other jurisdictions. It becomes even more problematic when you have a unified command. So as I mentioned, the new system will be digital, completely digital. So currently, we're operating on predominantly analog systems. So these would be digital system, their P-25 compliant, which was, came out of Department of Homeland Security. And then it also meets the DOJ encryption requirements that are set for. So the primary objective, obviously, is to be able to speak with each other and to be able to communicate in a large-scale event, crisis event. Scotts Valley is not unique in our geography, so they're predominantly looking at the Cadillac Radio Tower. There'll be significant upgrades to that tower, and that tower will service all of Scotts Valley, as well as part of the north end of the county, based off of its location. And because it's digital and the upgrades that are going to be provided, you will minimize it or reduce, completely reduce dead spots that we typically will see when we're anywhere past Pasatempo. A lot of times, our radios are no longer. Improve reliability because we'll have all of the latest equipment. I already mentioned the DOJ encryption. Cost efficiency because there's multiple agencies, and City Manager Lugo will talk more about the actual cost-sharing portion of it, but the cost efficiency. So we're not footing the bill for all of the radio upgrades ourselves. Currently, as you know, there's only two dispatch centers in the county. We're one, and NetComm is the other. So right now, whenever we do any sort of radio upgrades, whether it's in-house or at the radio at our tower, the city is, is doing all the heavy lifting. And in this case, we'll have a cost sharing throughout the county. And because it's the P-25 compliant and it meets the DOJ encryption standards, there'll be some eligible grants that the service provider will be looking to.
All right, well, I've had the pleasure over the last several months to work with the county and the other city managers to negotiate this master service and governance agreement. The, the goal behind this is to create an executive committee, a shared governance model where the county, the cities, and UCSC are coming together to discuss the policy and financial aspects of the project. Because the current agreement is not a joint powers authority, the, the legal entity of this committee is advisory to the County Board of Supervisors. There is discussion to move towards a JPA in the future where every member agency would have more of an equal vote. But in the effort of moving this forward and securing the vendor pricing that the county has successfully negotiated, we're, we're proposing to move forward with this governance agreement as an interim step before a JPA would be formed. The cost-sharing model covers both the infrastructure debt financing and the ongoing operation and maintenance of the project. And those are all the topics that the executive committee would be working together to govern. In addition to the executive committee, there are two other groups that would be formed to help advise the operations of, of this new system. So the regional user group would contain representatives from all of the member and subscriber agencies. So this is more where law and fire would be involved, not on the executive level, but on these user group levels, in order to provide input on how the system's functioning, what are the standards, what are the issues, and to help make sure that every, every user is having the experience that, that we expect out of the system. And then there will also be a technical advisory group, which does have representation from the users, but it also has a heavier IT focus, more of the technical staff who, who know how to operate and make sure that the system is functioning properly. And so that would be another group that would meet regularly, discuss technical issues, and if needed, you know, make, both of these groups would make recommendations to the executive committee for any, any changes that may be needed. The cost allocation formula is based on the number of radios accessing the system. So Scotts Valley is actually the smallest user at 46 radios. This is both the handheld radios and radios in our cars that would, that would be tied to the system. To contrast that, the county is the largest user at 1,120 radios. So from a cost-sharing perspective, you can see what a small share of cost that the city of Scotts Valley would incur compared to, you know, a user such as the county. The capital costs are shared between the six member agencies, the four cities, the county, and UCSC. And then also capital costs will, will potentially be funded by one-time subscriber connection fees. So we have invited and encouraged and are hoping that all the fire agencies are also going to utilize this system as subscribers. And so as a new subscriber joining the system, there would be some sort of subscriber connection fee that would help offset some of the infrastructure costs. And then the operation and maintenance costs are shared equally amongst all users. So that's both the member agencies and the subscriber agencies. So there's a lot of numbers on this chart. This is the, the projected budget, although I have to caveat that, you know, the numbers are a bit of a moving target. We, I have Scotts Valley's anticipated share of cost highlighted in green here. So you can see we're actually one of the lower, lower-cost organizations because we have such a low radio number connected to the entire system. You'll also notice that the first couple of years, the costs are lower. And then in fiscal year '29 is when the debt service for the infrastructure cost starts to kick in, and that debt service cost gets passed across the member agencies to help fund that into the future. It is a 10-year agreement with the option to renew for another 10 years. I think that the, the way we would want to handle this is long before that, this actually gets transitioned into a formal joint powers authority. If that happens, then this agreement would go away and be replaced by a JPA agreement, which would come to all of the city councils for your consideration once that's drafted. So we, as of right now, there isn't a, there's no budget amendment needed. None of these expenses would occur in the current fiscal year. The first expense is hit in fiscal year '27, so next fiscal year, our initial costs are in the $40,000 range, and then ongoing costs are closer to $100,000 per year to be part of this system. This is a $28 million project countywide. And as Interim Chief Rutherford mentioned, the Cadillac Tower here in Scotts Valley is slated to be one of the sites that gets significant improvements, and we will greatly benefit from those improvements. And the value of those improvements outweighs the costs that we're, that we're putting into this system. And so that's the advantage of that cost-sharing model across all of the agencies that would depend on this infrastructure. So just the recommendation this evening is to approve the resolution to participate in the system and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement, as well as other documents related to this project. We do anticipate a future license agreement, which would be an agreement between the city and, and the county or the Ring Group to use the Cadillac Tower as one of the infrastructure sites that, that we own, the tower, and the new equipment would be placed on that. So we'll be developing licensing agreements for that, for site utilization, and there may be other things that come up. And then further, the second part of the recommendation is to designate the city manager or her destiny as the voting member of the Ring Executive Committee, and that's consistent with how the other cities in the county are, are staffing that level of the, of the governance group. So with that, we're both available to answer questions and happy to hear your, your input on this important project.
Yes, thank you, city manager. You know, I'm a fan of anytime our agencies across our county can get together a good solution on something, because a lot of times, we spend a lot of times sitting on our own islands, working on things in silos. And when we're working together and we can share costs, I think it's a smart idea. So my question out of that is, I saw that the City of Santa Cruz had their resolution here. And obviously, the county wants us to do this, so, because they're asking for it. Watsonville and Capitola, are they also looking like they're ready to sign on?
Yes, they're agendizing in December for their regular council meetings. I think the first, first, maybe second week of December.
And is there any, if, you know, if we authorize this tonight, and we're still waiting on those agencies to sign on, and let's say they don't, do we have, is our resolution contingent on them participating as well? Or what is your recommendation on that?
The city attorney whispers in my ear that you can make your, your, your motion this evening could say that you authorize this contingent upon the others joining, which, which I, I don't know the status of UCSC either, so there'd be those three entities that are still left to approve. I have been in regular communication with the city managers, and I'm fully confident they are on board to join. I have, I have no doubt that, that certainly Capitola and Watsonville will be signing on.
Great, I would hope so, because this is something that makes sense for all our jurisdictions, and, and it's helpful when we can all share costs, especially on something where we all need to be in communication. And having radios that drop out, hearing what the chief said is concerning. If you get to Pasatempo and suddenly you can't make contact with someone, that doesn't make any sense. So, yeah, thank you for that. Oh, also, just in the staff report, I, I saw the, on the screen with the fee schedule, it just didn't show up fully in the staff report because it got chopped off. We might want to get the other half of it i- in the documentation, just so it doesn't get lost if someone's got to look back at this later and go, wait, we signed it up for 10 years, or do we sign it up for seven?
All right, so the agreement is for 10 years. This, these, these costs, as I mentioned, are projected. These are not commitments at this time. These costs are dependent on all of those subscriber agencies participating.
It's been examples, so it doesn't.
This is a projection of what we think the cost will be. So each fiscal year with your budget, we will bring that year's financial commitment to this project, and it will be contingent upon, you know, the member agencies, I'm very confident in their participation. The subscriber agencies is a, is another layer. And I think it is really important that fire is on our same system for, for the reasons that, that Chief Rutherford mentioned around communication with our fire partners. Well, I've heard that the, that our fire partners are, are having a little heartburn over some of the costs, and so we're working with them to figure out what the solutions over, over that could be. But, you know, if, if some of the subscriber agencies that are listed here decide not to participate, those costs don't go away. They get absorbed by the rest of the members and subscribers, and so that would affect everyone else's cost share.
And I understand there's a cost per radio, and then there's a flat cost. Does it, if, 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 you know, there are, is that just because we're counting up all the radios in the county and we're dividing that, or do they have a flat cost that's associated by, on their, on, on the way the agreement is put together? Like, if we add a radio, do we suddenly have more cost? Or is that just an assumption based on where we are now?
So both the infrastructure share of cost and the operations and maintenance are based on the number of radios, your proportional share of radios using the system. The agreement does have a true-up process outlined in the agreement, so that at the end of the year, if, if the numbers of radios have changed, there will be a financial true-up to account for any of those mid-year changes.
I understand. Okay, that makes sense. Got you. Okay, other questions? Yeah, Councilmember Jett.
Um, thank you, city manager. I, I have a question about the designation of Central Fire District, because I see it listed as a member, but I don't see it as having an assign, an assignment in the executive committee, but it also makes up for a fairly large part of the cost sharing. So do they fall under county?
No, that's a very good question. Central Fire in the last month has been in and out, and in and out, and in and out as a member agency. Currently, they are not committed to being a member of the executive committee. So that is why that's shown here as a potential member or a subscriber. We're hoping that Central Fire wants to join as a member, because to your point, they are a very large part of, very large agency who'd be utilizing the system, and it's important to have their voice. And, you know, as, as a fire agency, none of the other members are fire agencies, and so it'd be important to have a fire agency represented on the executive committee. And so they have been invited to join as a member. We're hoping that they will continue to consider that, but that's why they're shown there as a member, but not committed at this time.
Thanks, Councilwoman Clark.
Yeah, great. First of all, congratulations. We have been trying to solve radio interoperability all the way back in my career, the, when I actually had hair. So imagine how long ago that's been. But just want to ask here, so you explain the award that we were selected for from Congressman Panetta's office. It was $608,000 towards the Ring radio systems. So can you explain what that costing was and how it does or does not join with this?
Yeah, so two years ago, we submitted a federal earmark request to Congressman Panetta. That grant is not for this expense. It's for the dispatch console upgrade and the actual radios that we would have for our staff, is what that grant covers. So, so this funding is separate than what that funding was requested for. In addition to that, because last year, the federal government never passed a budget, they just continued the previous year's budget, those, no federal earmark were funded, no, no earmark projects were funded. So in this last year, we reapplied for that grant, and I checked in with Congressman Panetta's staff this week. The budget that the feds passed most recently does not include funding for these earmark projects. And so the next potential opportunity for it to actually be funded is in the end of January. So we'll continue to stay in touch with Congressman Panetta's staff. He supports that funding for our city, but until Congress passes a budget allocating the funds, we do not have that funding secured at this time.
And then all of that equipment that we're anticipating will work in conjunction with this plan?
Yes.
And then just finally too, so taking a look at the financing here on the chart, I understand why costs increase when the debt service kicks in, but then there's some pretty significant fluctuations in there. I'm just wondering if you can just explain what might account for those fluctuations in financing?
Yeah, I think it's just how the financing terms play out over time. Again, it's, you know, it's a few thousand dollars here and there, up and down. I think for us, budgeting-wise, counting on $100,000 a year in our long-term forecast, which Mr. Tollor helped us develop, will help us manage that long-term commitment. But as I said, I, I am not too attached to these numbers, because I know they're going to change depending on which subscriber agencies end up participating and how some of this plays out. So I, I wish that I could be bringing you a really solid budget commitment as part of this agreement, but that's just not, that's not the way that the project is rolling out and flowing.
Okay. Yeah, that's it for my questions. Again, thank you for your work on this. I know this has been a heavy lift, this beating through all of this, and I too would be supportive of us moving towards a JPA concept in how this governs in the future. I'll look forward to that.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, I echo this, many of the concerns, and particularly, as, as we discussed, I know it's, it's your goal to, to work towards a JPA. And as we talked about years ago, we had something similar involving radios, and without that JPA, we really don't have that voice. And I know that, that that's very important to staff, to you and staff as well. I do wonder, I mean, right now is not the time, but I do think it's something we may watch for grants that might help support that. And where we are today, that's, it's hard to, to look at that, but I, I feel there's some opportunities that would be good to watch for grants that might help us countywide, possibly, but at least for Scotts Valley. And I still have hair, but I did have many times that I lost communication through the years of my career. And it's a scary moment when you can't hear from your officers, or you can't reach anyone. So this is something that we've worked for, for a long time. So this is something that we've worked for a long time, and thank you for being part in moving it forward.
Any other comments?
I guess for the, so do we have cost estimates or projections, like, what, JPA? Is there any additional costs that that would?
The cost would be very similar. If it was a JPA, right now, built into these costs, the operation and maintenance is being done by county staff, and so that O and M budget is developed by the county. And that, is that what the county tells us the cost is? That's what the cost is.
Okay.
If we had a JPA, it would be more of a contract relationship with the county, where we'd have a little more negotiating authority to negotiate with the county as far as how much we're willing to pay for them to maintain the system. So I think that's one of the advantages of transitioning to an actual JPA.
Okay, and then do we have projections? So these projections are all based on having all these subscribers. Do we have a example, projection, if none of these subscribers sign on? Do we have that?
Yeah, staff have looked at multiple scenarios. I didn't include multiple scenarios here, in part because the numbers are a moving target, and in part because we're hoping all of these agencies are going to participate. Overall, Scotts Valley's share of the radio, radios proportionally is like 2.5%. So if those agencies pull out, it's really the county and Santa Cruz and Watsonville who will take a much harder hit from those increased costs, and our proportional increased costs would be much lower. So when we did look at those scenarios, you know, the cost for Scotts Valley did not fluctuate that much. It fluctuates for the larger agencies much more, because they have so many more radios connected to the system, because in a few thousand-dollar range.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, it looks like the county are only 4% of the contribution. So, okay.
Right, any further questions? Seeing none from council. Do we have any from the public? Any online? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to council and a further comment or question, please.
I'd move resolution 2075. President of the Council of the City of Scotts Valley approving master governance and service agreement for the regional interoperable next-generation radio system, Ring.
Are you open to?
Oh, and yes, with an amendment that we, that this would be contingent on the other agencies participating.
And those agencies being?
Keeping towards a JPA.
Sorry, those agencies being the other cities and the UC.
Yes.
It was, yeah, it was Watsonville.
Other municipal jurisdictions, and I would think UCSC.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any none? Could I get a, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, motion passed unanimously. And with that?
We have one more action on your screen there.
Oh, we do? Okay, sorry. Oh, yes, do we have a?
You need a separate motion for that?
Yes, since it wasn't included in the first one.
Yeah. So I'll move that we designate the city manager or her designee as Scotts Valley's voting member of the Ring Executive Committee. Somebody really wanted an acronym.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, and we'll go to our next item on our agenda. That is future agenda items. Have any consideration? All right, seeing none, then we'll go.